Good evening. I now call the special meeting of the Huntsville City Council to order. We're going to start with opening remarks from Mayor Battle and introductions. Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce some guests we have tonight. We have County Commission Chairman Dale Strong in the audience. Dale has been a great partner as we have worked through this. The County Commission has an investment in this project just as well as we do. We also have Joey C.C. with him, who is the Director of Long Range Retail and Industrial Projects for Madison County. Joey, welcome. Glad to have you. We have the President and CEO of our Chamber of Commerce, Chip Cherry, who will be taking part in the presentation. As everybody knows, through this process, we have all been under a non-disclosure. We started back in April of this year under a non-disclosure. That non-disclosure ended at two today when Remington announced that they would be expanding a plant, expanding their operations here to the city of Huntsville. Now's the time that we want to lay out all the details of it. We have tried to keep council involved in this on one-on-one meetings, talking to them through this process to make sure that they understand they have been under non-disclosure also, so they have not been able to talk about it. So, this is the time and place where we are going to lay out through the people who work for the city of Huntsville and our representatives, our industrial recruitment, our project overview, our development agreement and the mechanics of it, Huntsville's commitment by our Finance Director Randy Taylor, return on community investment by Chip Cherry, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll close up with myself on this. If that fits for the council, are there any...
Council members, what we'll do is, we have four items to vote on tonight. We have the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a project development agreement, which the mayor has mentioned. Then we'll have a budget ordinance, a resolution to adjust the capital improvement plan, and then we'll have a resolution to honor Pastor Montgomery from Mr. Culver. I need to vote to put the Pastor Montgomery resolution on the agenda tonight, so the Chair moves for approval to add that to the agenda. Second by Dr. Showers, all those in favor of adding that to the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's been added. So, what I'd like to do for the council and to the public is, we'll first open it up with the project development agreement. I'd like to put it on the floor, and then we'll allow the mayor to go through his proposal, just like he mentioned, and then we'll take public comment, then the council members obviously can discuss it and ask questions, and then we'll vote on it. And then we'll just do the budget ordinance and the resolution immediately after that, and then do Mr. Culver's resolution. So, right now, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a project development agreement among the city of Huntsville, Alabama, Madison County, Alabama, the Industrial Board of the city of Huntsville, and the company, which is now Remington. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, and a close third by Mr. Kling. So now we'll go with Mayor, do you want to...
Yes, sir. I'd like to introduce this. I'd like to call on first Michelle Jordan, our Director of Economic Development Legislative Affairs, to talk about the industrial recruitment process and what we were looking for in this project.
Yes, Mayor Battle, council, good evening. The city of Huntsville has an incredible track record in recruiting high-tech industry in the fields of research and development, manufacturing for our space and missile defense industry, the biomedical sector, and the automotive sector. Manufacturing is an important part of our economic diversification, and we're making huge strides in connecting our intellectual and research and development capabilities with our production opportunities. We are extremely proud that our area is quickly becoming a hub for the manufacturing and advanced manufacturing industry with companies like Toyota, Navistar, Raytheon, Boeing, SESI, Ulista, Indo, Samina SCI, LG, Teledigm Brown, Northrup, Adtran, and others locating in our area and deciding to expand in our area. In recent years, the city has increased our efforts on working to diversify our job market and our economy with an increased focus on the manufacturing and advanced manufacturing sector. Remington Outdoor Company Incorporated aligns perfectly with our economic development mission of increasing the manufacturing and advanced manufacturing sector in our economy, and we are confident that our highly skilled workforce will add to Remington's longstanding history of being a leader in this industry. Today's announcement represents yet another vote of confidence in Huntsville.
And, Mr. President, I might say that this also is a diversity in our economic base. This is a diversity that goes towards private enterprise and not as much towards government contracting, so that is another added plus for this project. Mr. Davis is going to go through the project overview, and thank you Shane Davis, who is our Director of Urban Development. And I'll have to say this before we get started. Shane Davis is one of the reasons this whole project happened. He worked tirelessly through this, worked day and night. He kept pushing me, pushing me, pushing me to push for this and that, and he has really done an excellent job with this. And Shane, let me say congratulations to you in front of everybody. You are one of the unsung heroes of this project.
Mayor, you're too kind, but thank you. Council members, I want to give you a little overview of Project Traveler. The city of Huntsville, along with the Chamber of Commerce, the North Alabama Industrial Development Association, the state of Alabama, and Madison County began continuing for Project Traveler in July of 2013. With the assistance of M.R. Press Consulting, a project RFP process was submitted and evaluated with 24 states and numerous cities to determine the best expansion location for Remington Outdoor Company. Our team determined in reviewing the RFP, the best opportunity in our city contending for this project was to submit a proposal based on locating the project at 100 Electronics Boulevard in the Jetplex Industrial Park. Give you a little overview of the facility. It's a 148.5 acre campus. It's a multi-building campus and encompasses almost 900,000 square feet of both office, R&amp;D, manufacturing, and distribution space. It's located in a forward trade zone and has excellent access to I-565, Huntsville's International Intermobil Center, and our Huntsville International Airport. As I mentioned, the project consists of a phased-in plan of both manufacturing, research and development, warehousing, and associated support employment at the 900-square-foot multi-building campus. Project location, as I mentioned, is 100 Electronics Boulevard. Full-time employment created from the project is up to 2,000 positions. 1,868 is guaranteed in the development agreement. The capital investment by Remington is guaranteed at $110,900,000. The hourly wage of the employment averages $20.19, that's exclusive of benefits. Full-time employment created, annual average salary is $42,000 a year. You have before you on the screen is the 11-year projection of jobs created. Year one, please note that capital investments in facility improvements, equipment installation and setup, workforce development, training will occur in year one by Remington. And year two, you can see an accelerated ramp-up. There's 280 jobs committed in the first year of operations. And by year seven, we're at full employ... Excuse me, year eight, we're at full employment of what is guaranteed in the development agreement to move forward, and that's what our development agreement is based off of our incentives. Overall, local incentive commitments by the community, $9.5 million will be committed by the city of Huntsville, and $3 million by Madison County, and $2 million by the Industrial Development Board, for a total of $14.5 million in local incentives to bring Remington Outdoor Company to our community. I'd like to note that the Industrial Development Board of Huntsville's commitment is through partnerships with Morgan County, Limestone County, the city of Athens, and the Limestone County Economic Development Association. A little background about Remington. Remington Outdoor Company Incorporated was founded in 1816 in New York as R.E. Remington &amp; Sons. The company is a leader in designing, producing, and selling sporty good products for the hunting and shooting sports markets, as well as military, government, and law enforcement markets. Remington Outdoor Company is the largest U.S. producer of shotguns and rifles for sporting, law enforcement, military use. This is something that they should be very proud of, and I'm sure they are. Remington Outdoor Company Incorporated is the oddest company in the United States which still makes its own original product, and is the oddest continually operating manufacturer in North America. Its products are distributed in over 60 foreign countries with annual revenues exceeding $1 billion.
Excuse me, that is the overview of what the mechanics of our agreement were, and that's where we came in with the overview. Now, we would like to ask Rod Cantor, who has been working through this Saturdays, Sundays, Friday nights, I think I called him Sunday morning at 8:30 and talked to him. Mr. Cantor has been putting together a development agreement in conjunction with our city attorney, Peter Joffreyon. And Rod, if you would kind of walk us through the development agreement mechanics, how that development agreement is, and what requirements are on our side and what the requirements are on their side.
And, Mr. Cantor, if you could introduce yourself and tell us what firm you're with.
Absolutely. My name is Rod Cantor. I'm a Public Finance and Economic Development Partner at Bradley &amp; Bolt Cummings. I have with me Trey Hill, one of my partners in the same group.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. The mechanics of the development agreement really are centered around the two principal incentives for Remington. The first incentive is an incentive of $12.5 million. The second incentive is an incentive of $2 million for a total of $14.5 million. What I'm going to do is discuss the first incentive and how that works, and then discuss the second incentive, and that you'll see at the end, that's really the easiest way to explain how this agreement plays out. The first incentive is very easy. It's a $12.5 million commitment. The money is used to acquire the land and the building for the old Chrysler Building and make some early capital improvements and make it available for use by Remington. As Shane has pointed out, there are hiring targets that Remington has over a 10-year period of time. And so, the way the development agreement works is, we took that $12.5 million initial incentive, divided it by 10, and allocated $1,250,000 to each of those years. We laid them up against each of those years of the FTE hiring schedule that you saw Shane put up. The agreement contains a clawback. Clawback feature is, in essence, a feature that is used if a company doesn't meet its expected performance criteria. And so, for each project year, if the company fails to hire the minimum FTE that it's committed to hire, or if it fails to satisfy the minimum average annual wage, then the company makes a payment to the city. The amount of that payment is done pro rata. It depends on what their performance was. If they perform 50% of what they were supposed to do, the payment is half of $1,250,000, or $625,000. They perform 75%, then the payment's only a quarter of $1,250,000, which is $312,500. If Remington performs, they don't pay anything. So, that's the way that feature works. The agreement also has a second clawback feature. That clawback feature is designed to make sure that the city and the other North Alabama partners get the long-term benefit of their bargain. And, as has been mentioned, Remington is a long-term player in the markets they're in. They've been around longer than just about any company you can imagine. But if, for some reason, they were to leave early, then our agreement has a second clawback feature whereby, depending on how long, how early they leave and how long they've been here at the city, they owe money back as well. If they leave before the close of the sixth year, then they essentially either give the building and the land back, or they cut a check for $12.5 million. If it's after that year, after year six, then they get a little bit of credit for the amount of time that they've been and the amount of time that they've performed. And it works out very, very nicely. It's, again, a second layer. And of course, if they have to leave for reasons that are outside their control, very specified, narrowly tailored reasons of force majeure, new legislation impacting production of firearms, for instance, then some of the payments they made early on, the payments that they made early on count against what they would owe us for having to leave early. But again, that's just a long-term protection. So, that's really the mechanics and how the first incentive works. The second incentive is a $2 million incentive. This incentive is separate and apart from the one that I just described. So, it does not have any sort of clawback feature in that regard, but what it is is a bonus feature. As the company performs and meets FTE targets, then the company receives payments. For the first 250 FTE, which is estimated by the end of year two, the company receives $500,000. For the second 250, for a total of 500 FTE, another $500,000. When they hit 750 FTE, another $500,000, and by the time they get to 1,000 FTE, they get the last $500,000. So, these are payments that go along. Securing all of this, all of the performance obligations of the company is a mortgage. The city will receive a foreclosable mortgage on the building and the land. So, if at any time during the life of this incentive, during the life of this period of time of performance, there's a failure to perform, the city is always secured by being able to foreclose on the building. It's a very, very protective structure as it pertains to the performance. The only other thing I'll add is that, you know, we have this meeting where this agreement will be approved, but because this agreement's being approved under provisions of Amendment 772, we needed to provide notice to meet the legal requirements. That notice will be in the newspaper on Wednesday. That is a notice to say that this council will be meeting again to ratify and affirm this agreement if it's approved tonight on the 27th. So, that's just one little housekeeping item.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. And one of the things, many people don't know the name of what a clawback is, and clawback is just a way to protect the taxpayers' money that has been put into this project to make sure that what has been agreed upon is, the conditions that have been agreed upon have been met. We have no reason at all to ever expect that Remington will not meet or exceed every expectation that we have, but we have to protect the taxpayer in this to make sure that if something did happen, where those expectations were not met, then we have a way to get our money back and to protect the taxpayers' dollars. Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Taylor, Randy Taylor, our Director of Finance, is going to come up, and he's going to address Huntsville's commitment in this.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, as Mr. Davis has already shown you on a previous slide, the city's immediate commitment is $9.5 million to the project. That will be the substantial component that allows the facility and the capital contribution that the city is offering the company to be funded. And this commitment would be funded very soon after the approval by the council and all the requirements, after all the requirements have been met. The $9.5 million from the city would be provided by the city of Huntsville's Capital Improvement Plan. You know that we have a 10-year plan that supports our infrastructure growth and maintenance, and also economic development initiatives. That plan has been operating for about 23 years and has been doing this all along. So, that $9.5 million is available in the capital fund. You'll have a budget ordinance to see later tonight that will address that. The $9.5 million inside the fund comes from two primary sources. Number one is that there is an element in the capital fund that has supported, interestingly enough, another economic development project 13 years ago, for which the city had made significant commitments, and we decided to hold some money back to protect against the risks of that particular project not being as successful as we thought it might be. So, that was a wise and conservative move by the council in establishing TIF 3A back in 2001. So, a portion of this money, because that project has matured and has provided ample resources to cover all of our obligations, we are not as concerned, not concerned at all about our ability to meet our commitments with respect to TIF 3A. So, some of that money is now available back in the capital fund to use on another economic development project. So, some of that will come from that. The rest of it, and really the largest portion, will come from inside the capital fund itself. The council has always supported a conservative policy in developing our long-range plans. That protected us through the recession. It has supported our AAA credit rating six times in a row, and so, there is a reserve of money in the capital fund that we have always maintained to be available for things that we don't see coming like this. With all of our planning, there are still things that come to the city that present opportunities, and we need to be prepared to respond. So, those two amounts of money that we have available in the fund will be what we'll use to fund this commitment by the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. One of the questions was, what does this do to our AAA rating? Mr. Dotz had a very good answer last night, that this diversifies our economy and the diversification of our economy. That's always been the one thing that any of the rating agencies have looked at, how diverse is your economy? This helps diversify it, so this helps even strengthen the AAA rating, according to conversations yesterday. Chip Cherry's here. He's our CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. One of the things, we make commitments in this, we pay out taxpayers' dollars, and then you expect something back on it. And Chip is going to address the economic development side of this, what our return is on our community and investment. And Chip, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. As you can see on the slide, the annual, the total capital investment for Remington is projected to be $110 million. Estimated annual payroll at around $105, depending on their full employment level, we think it'll be well north of that. You see the property tax number there of $9.5 million, sales tax of $24 million, and income taxes of $11, or almost $12 million, and other taxes are projected at $5.2 million for a total of $50,800,000 a year when they get to full employment. One of the things that's not reflected on that slide is secondary impact. And based on our model, when they get to full employment in year eight, total number of induced employment, or folks who work in retail, support, service, those types of things, is projected to be 3,460 additional jobs and generate another $139 million a year annually when they get to full employment. So, this is a very strong return on investment for the city of Huntsville and the region. It's also something that is a little unique in the Shane, next slide, the partnership that it took to pull this off. We have, you know, TVA, it stepped up and provided funding for this particular project. We have our partners in the region are funding $5 million in total from the other four governments that are participating in this, which I believe is unprecedented, and it shows a great cooperation of how the communities in this region have kind of come together and see the value of a large economic development project, and it's really been a very rewarding experience to be able to work with all these partners to pull this off, Mayor.
Thank you, Chip. And let me say, thank you for all your work. I know you haven't been home many weekends as we've worked through this and have been at work quite a bit through the weekends trying to make sure all this works. Council, this is an economic development project for us. We are investing in a company coming to here, providing up to 2,000 jobs, providing $110 million worth of investment in our community, and we're also investing in a long-term industry that will be here a long time. We have put in safeguards to protect the taxpayers' dollars. We are putting up $9.5 million worth of taxpayers' dollars, and we have put in safeguards to protect those dollars in some of the best ways we can. Clawbacks is what you call it. We don't expect to ever have to touch those. Remington is a very honorable company. They have been very good to work with. We have had a great relationship with them all the way through. But to protect the taxpayer, we have to put those in, and so, we do put those in and make sure that they are in our development agreement, which is what you're voting on tonight. The development agreement does not tell you what the economic development is that comes out of this. This development agreement approaches everything bad that could happen, everything that could happen down the road. It talks about if they don't hit numbers, if this happens, if that happens, but it doesn't talk about the economic development. And the economic development that we have here is, we have a better economic base today than we had yesterday. We have the future of 2,000 more workers here. We have the future of a payroll that hits us annually of $70 million, year in and year out. And we also have an industry that can grow. If you look at any of the, on any of the websites that Remington's owned, there are a lot of products out there that could come to Huntsville. And so, we look forward to bringing Remington to Huntsville. We look forward to working with them as a good partner over the future. I think Chairman Strong said it best when we started talking about the future is very bright for them, and I think that the numbers that they're looking at, they want to make sure they can hit those numbers, but I think they're probably minimal numbers from what we're seeing. Chairman Strong, do you have anything to say? Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council or have questions that we can try to answer for you? Ms. Reed?
Come on.
Please introduce yourself.
How did you know? I'm Jackie Reed. I think you've done a great job. I'm glad you called this meeting and let the public know what's really going on. That really concerns me. I'd worked many years in the manufacturing plant with many companies in the city. I'm glad to see us back in the manufacturing business. I think it's great for the city. I think you've done a good job. Money, you know me, I'll be keeping my eyes on the money. And the ifs, you know, that's what I'm standing for. Y'all do a good job and make sure the commitment's going on and jobs are filled, and don't keep borrowing money. Let's get all the money coming in. The property, if the city owns the property, are you going to buy the property? We are buying the property, the taxpayers?
We are buying the property. We will transfer a deed to them so that they will own the property, but they will have a mortgage back to us on that property. Year by year, that mortgage will be forgiven if they hit their FTEs, which is your employment numbers, and if they hit the investment numbers. So, all that determines that if we forgive the amount that is made in payment each year. It's probably the best way to do what they call clawbacks, because you actually have something that you can fall back on, rather than falling back on the name and good reputation of the company and ending up in lawsuits with the company. So, that's the reason that we structured it that way. At the end of 10 years, if all the commitments are made, they will own the building, they will own the property, and I think it will be a good thing for them to own that property outright, because I think they would have a great future with it.
If the city owns the property, will they still have to pay property taxes? That was my question.
They still will pay property taxes.
If the city owns a property?
Yes.
Do we hold them liable for the property taxes?
Yes, ma'am. They will pay property taxes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else from the public wish to address the council? Councilmember's questions, comments? Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, Mr. Davis mentioned, I think, that the participation rate was going to be $9.5 million from the city, $3 million from Madison County, and I guess I wanted to ask, what incentives or participation is the state government having in this?
The state government has, they announced today their incentive is $50 million in this. The state government stepped up very well to the table with this. Most of the time, their incentive is three times what the local community puts in. They went just a little bit beyond that. So, you know, we've got to say, we had a great partnership with Department of Commerce and the Governor's Office, and each one of them stepped up to the plate.
Okay. Y'all made reference to other or outlying communities. Where this is located, it's going to be near the city of Madison. What's the city of Madison's participation?
Councilman Kling, the commitment was city of Huntsville, Madison County, Morgan County, Limestone County, and city of Athens.
Mr. Culver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Everything that I've seen and heard, I'm excited about. With all of the revenue that's going to be generated, this is something that not only Huntsville and Madison County will feel, but North Alabama. What I haven't heard addressed, however, is the training. Are we going to reach out to Calhoun Community College? Are we going to reach out to Drake College? Are we going to even look at perhaps some of the high schools offering training for these manufacturing jobs?
Councilman Culver, AIDT through the state has committed a significant amount of funding for workforce development training, and we, along with Madison County and other partners who have contributed to this project, will be working to them, with them as far as labor pools and getting that word out of how to apply, how to get into AIDT's training center so that once they're trained through AIDT, they will apply for those jobs. So, we'll be working the community for that.
And I might have Ms. Jordan come up and speak, because we have been talking about this and how to do job fairs, how to do outreach to make sure that everybody has a chance at these jobs, because these jobs are good-paying jobs, they're good-production jobs, and you might want to mention your conversation with Ed Castile and AIDT.
Sure. As soon as Remington is ready, we're ready to partner with AIDT and our local colleges, our community colleges, and have job fairs. We want to make sure that everyone throughout the community knows how to apply for these jobs, what the requirements are, and if they need any training, that they know how to get that training. So, we've made a commitment with the state, they've made a commitment to us and the company to ensure that our workforce pool is made aware of all the opportunities and how to be a part of it.
And that is good. That is awesome. I'm happy to hear that. I'm happy to hear that. Also, would it be possible to include, I understand that Grissom High has a manufacturing curriculum. Would it be possible to include high schools? I'm hoping that we can also do this at Johnson High or Jamison High as well, you know, for those kids maybe who have no, when I say have no interest in college, let me put it carefully, maybe those students who have chosen not to go to college would have an opportunity to maybe start getting prepared, maybe their senior year in high school.
I can assure you, we will be working with the school board, any job outlets that are available, anything that we can do with the school board. They have, at each one of their schools, they have concentrations on how to be ready for the workforce when you come out of high school. And every one of them, we will be working with in the Huntsville City Schools to make sure that they're ready.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm happy that's in the hub of my district as well.
Mr. Shesky?
I always like when Councilman Culver talks about Grissom. Always makes me feel good. Appreciate the plug. Messing with you. Hey, Shane, I know you kind of passed it off here earlier and, you know, but let me make sure of something. I beat on you guys a lot for staff work and, because sometimes I even question it. But I'm going to tell you, I'm not questioning it here tonight, that you guys did a phenomenal job over this last months on this deal. And to see the team that you got out there, you know, when I hear the Phil Dotz's name come up, and I hear Bradley A. Rand come up, and I see who's out there and how you put it all together with the mayor, of course, and John down there and Peter, I got all that. But I just want you to know, it ain't lost on me how much you went on to this, because this was all going on when this other wonderful one we were chasing that you probably tripled in your workload on that we didn't get. But I'll tell you, it was a big, this is a big win. This is bigger than big, because this manufacturing deal is huge, and I know I'm saying what everybody else is saying, but I don't want anything to lose. You got your team and all those people along that wall back there that, you know, do everyday work, plus great stuff like this. I appreciate it. And I am very excited about us looking at these youth of America getting into this, because one thing I learned along, about four years ago now, that we, all I was pushing for the longest time was four-year, four-year, four-year college degrees. Well, there's kids out there that don't want four years. They just want to, they want to be electricians. They want to be all those other cool jobs. And this is another opportunity to open up something that they've never played in gunmaking before and all that type of machinery. And so, and by the way, Dale, I didn't miss it on you either, brother. Appreciate all the support we got from Madison County on this. And Chip, you too, and I know the mayor says it, but we councilmen do know all the stuff that goes on, and we appreciate all that effort, and it's quite a team. And that sign behind Robert today was even more powerful, and I don't think people appreciated all those, all those insignias of every outfit that played in this. That was big. So enough said, Chip, you know, congratulations to the city, congratulations to y'all and to all of us, because this was big. Thanks.
Council members, Dr. Showers?
Mr. President, I too am delighted. Mayor, I must say, this has been one of the best-kept secrets since I've been on this council. The climaxing of the press conference today certainly is a delight for Huntsville, Madison County. I'm looking at the incentives that has been committed in this draft that we have, the 9.5 million by the city, $2 million by the county, and a million by the IDP, the Industrial Development Board. Mr. Davis, if situations come to play that either one of these entities are not able to take care of the incentive that's agreed upon, what is the plan to accomplish the deficit if that would be the case?
Councilman Showers, the development agreement lays out that, you know, we represent only our nine and a half million. Madison County will be a signatory to the development agreement, I believe. Chairman Strong has an introduction meeting in the morning, is that correct? For which they will be voting on too. You will ratify two weeks from now. I can tell you that Limestone, Morgan, and City of Athens will be carrying out the same votes with their council and commission prior to your ratification. But it is structured in the development agreement. Peter may want to provide you a little more detail. But we make representation that the IDB's commitment is coming through those other local entities.
Where in the document is shown the commitment by the others that you just named?
The commitments will be by side agreement between the IDB and Limestone, Morgan, and the City of Athens. And that should be coming, should you pass this tonight, in Madison County will be forthcoming probably in the next seven business days between those two entities.
And I will say, all three entities were at the announcement today. All three entities were very excited about being part of this. Each of them came up personally and talked to me and said, you know, I thank them for being a good partner, and they thanked us for working with them too. They look to gain just as much out of this as we do. There will be some of the people living in Limestone County or Morgan County who are working there, because this is at the airport property right on the county line. So it's in the interest of each of these bodies to make that happen.
And Councilman Showers, I will reiterate, when they made the commitment during the RFP process, their financing is in place, or their budget, I should say, is in place. It's just pending of votes, which the same that you are tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kanner, I have questions for you, if you can go back to the microphone. I appreciate your explanation. I appreciate your willingness to answer questions tonight. You talked about the first incentive, which was $12.5 million, $9.5 million from the City of Huntsville and $3 million to Madison County. Is that correct?
It is, it's nine and a half million dollars from Huntsville, and the rest is ultimately paid by the county.
Two million?
Two million by the county upfront, a million by the Industrial Development Board. Madison County will be reimbursed in the Industrial Development Board at the beginning of 2015.
Okay. And then you talked about the second phase, which was the bonus money, $200,000. Where's that coming from?
That is coming from the IDB, and it will be reimbursed by the other North Alabama governments.
And so what I, I just didn't really understand the bonus part of it. So if Remington meets their projections, they will receive a bonus, and you said $500,000 from this IDB money?
That is correct. The bonus money is structured differently than the first incentive. You kind of have to, you kind of have to take into account that we are trying to incentivize them to hire, hire as quickly as they can, get things moving. And if they do, because they're going to want to get that incentive money as quickly as they can, if they do meet these targets, then they get those payments.
Okay. And the part that I don't understand is if, if the bonus isn't met, the $500,000 isn't paid, who then gets that $500,000? Does it count against the city's economic incentive, or does it go back to the IDB and split back to the cities that put into the IDB? And that's my question.
It would go back and, it would go back and be split among them.
Okay. So in some ways, they have a chance of getting their money back, and the cities, you see what I'm saying? They're just paying, they're paying for the bonus. And so the jobs will go on?
Well...
And if they don't meet the bonus, then they'll get their money back and won't have paid anything for the original...
Mr. President, we have the same thing in our agreement with the $12.5 million. Whatever is not paid comes directly back to us.
And they wouldn't share?
It's not split among any of them. So it's kind of the same numbers in there.
It is.
Okay. So I guess we're both at equal risk, really?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councilman President, remember, that's a two-phased approach, so both of them have the same type of return.
Okay. And then Ms. Cherry, if you could answer a few questions for me? This is obviously one of the biggest economic development projects I can remember working on. Obviously, BRAC is the biggest. But how often do these come along, you know, for our citizens? Do they, do they come up every day? You know, I think they want to know, should we jump on it, or do we get these every day?
No, they don't come every day. These are projects that you will see, 2,000 jobs. Well, we're in an odd situation in the state that we see a lot of activity, so we've seen a couple of these. But the most recent was the Boeing project, and obviously, we know how that went. As far as live viable projects, you may see one of these every five or six years.
So it's very special?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would tell you that I've gotten messages from mayors across the state and in some other areas. All of them would like to be in our situation right now. I think Chairman Strong has gotten messages from counties from all over the state and other places, too. They would all love to be in our position.
Thank you. And I want to thank Mayor Battle and his team for all their work. Chairman Strong, thank you very much. We appreciate everybody's partnerships. Very, very proud that Athens and some of these other counties and cities have joined the partnership and feel very good about that part of it. And it shows Mayor Battle the teamwork that you and Chairman Strong have, and we really appreciate that. It's such a great example for our community. Council members, are there any other questions or discussion before we vote? Ms. Kling?
Actually, I just want to kind of echo what you said, Mr. President. Congratulate the mayor and his staff, the county, and all the teamwork on it, because it's a great thing. And yeah, this is one of the first, this type of manufacturing jobs coming. I know we have a large number of people in the Huntsville, Madison County, North Alabama area that will really be able to provide good labor for that. And Mr. Russell, you kind of got me thinking moments ago when you were talking about the, you know, the size of this. You may recall that, I guess, around, once a year, we get a report from the Tax Assessor's Office that lists the largest, you know, property taxpayers that we have here in Madison County. And I believe this is going to be a top 10 participant in that, and that shows how big this is. This is probably, based on those numbers, going to be one of the 10 largest industries easily here in Huntsville, Madison County. So this is definitely a big one, and congratulations to all the team, covering bodies that participate in this. Y'all did a great job.
Mr. Shesky?
I can't help it. I got to ask this question. So let me make sure of something. Madison City gave nothing.
That is correct.
And so they'll get people living in there that'll be buying homes in there and spending money in there and all the above. But they, you know, the best school system in the country and all the great things they got in Madison, but they gave nothing for this.
Sir, we just move forward.
All right. Thanks.
Further comments, discussion? We're voting on the development agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you. And I have to, have to, and Councilman Shesky, this is nothing, this is just something we need to consider. We have to come to Madison's rescue a little bit. Madison is also paying the full freight on the Integra property that's being done. So they're paying the full freight on that in conjunction with the county commission. And there are a number of people who work at Integra who live in the City of Huntsville. So, you know, with the freight that they were pulling at that time, I think that we have to say that they're pulling that share.
That's fair, but nobody said it. So I appreciate you coming back with it.
Okay. The next item we have is the ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 13-360, adopted and approved on September 12, 2013. Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Taylor, could you explain this, please?
Council members, as I mentioned to you just a moment ago, the item consists of two elements in the capital improvement fund. You're going to transfer, you're going to receive a transfer from the TIF 3A fund of $3.5 million. And then that coupled with the capital fund reserves, you will appropriate $9.5 million for Project Remington. And that money will be available to be spent as soon as the agreement is finally approved and we're ready to move forward. The second component of this is from the TIF 3A fund, which is where those reserves are being held that I described. You're transferring that over to the capital fund, and that's $3.5 million.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? All those in favor of this ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. The next is a resolution to amend the City of Huntsville Capital Improvement Plan, 2014-2023, Resolution Number 13-361, originally adopted on September 12, 2013. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, second?
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Ms. Kling. Mr. Taylor?
Council members, this is a secondary action related to what you just did. We do have a finance policy that, while you've just amended the budget, and that's your official spending action, because we have a 10-year capital improvement plan that's required to list all projects, this project, Project Remington, is not in the capital plan. And so because of the budget action that you just taken, we need to formally include that in our long-range plan, as well as a number of other just minor things that have happened since you last adopted the plan in September.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We now have a resolution honoring Dr. Oscar Montgomery. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, second?
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, I would like to enter just a very brief portion of this, this resolution honoring Dr. Montgomery. In just a paragraph, it says, "Whereas during his 37 years at Union Hill Primitive Baptist Church, has grown from a small congregation of less than 60 members to now more than 900 members. Along with his designated duties as a caring pastor, Dr. Montgomery has introduced many innovative programs to Union Hill's Christian education ministry. He has provided leadership from the development of an onsite church-sponsored tutorial service for elementary, middle, and high school students. Dr. Montgomery successfully led the church to construct a Christian worship and education facility and the construction of a community life center for the purpose of providing full-time daycare, meeting rooms, fitness centers, and a variety of recreational activities for the community." We will be presenting this, Dr. Oscar, to Dr. Oscar Montgomery, Dr. Richard Showers, and myself, and all of the other council members who would like to attend. We will present this on Sunday, February 23, 2014, at 4:00 at Union Hill Primitive Baptist Church, located on Winchester Road. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.